And would the clerk call the room, please?
Commissioner Look.
Here.
Commissioner Brassad.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
Commissioner Meisner.
Here.
Commissioner Gamache.
Here.
Terrific. Let's get on to tax claims and abatements. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Brassad.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamache. Any further discussion? With that, we'll have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
And that passes. Next, we will have a review of checks issued from Finance and Central Services and from Human Services. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Look, second by Commissioner West. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? And that passes. Next, we will look to approve the minutes of the June 11th, 2019 County Board meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Brassad. The second from Commissioner West. Any further discussion or corrections? Seeing none, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Minutes are adopted. I have nothing for you today under Chair's remarks, so we'll move right into committee reports. And we will start with the Transportation Committee. And we had an opportunity to meet here on June 17th. I was not in attendance, but the rest of the committee was. They have a few action items for you. First, the committee recommends approval of the conveyance of a trail easement on property owned along Jackson Street to the city of East Bethel. This is a Resolution 2019 TR-15. Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer it.
The resolution's been offered. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? And that will pass unanimous. Next, the committee recommends approval of a resolution of support for various road and bridge projects in Anoka County for the 2020 legislative session. They are items A, B, C, and D. First is the U.S. Highway 10 Adeline Project. Second would be the Highway 47 Railroad Grade Separation. The third would be Trunk Highway 65 Grade Separation at 109th Avenue. And lastly would be the Trunk Highway 610 Full Access Interchange at East River Road. So is somebody willing to offer all four resolutions?
Mr. Chair.
The resolution's been offered by Commissioner Look. Commissioner West, did you have a comment?
I was going to.
All right, so we have a resolution on the floor. Commissioner Look.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to comment on the following list here. Not sure on the 610, the final one, but the rest of them are not county-owned roadways. But we certainly do recognize the importance of trying to encourage the legislature to support these projects because of the importance that they play to us here in Anoka County, to our residents. I was, it reminds me of a time I was driving on Highway 10 and there was a vehicle accident and field debris that I was driving around as they were trying to determine fault. And I noticed the plates were from Wyoming, not Wyoming, Minnesota, the state of Wyoming. And so this thoroughfare that comes through particularly on Highway 10 and other roadways, it's not necessarily a problem for Anoka County residents because we might avoid some of these congested areas. But certainly the rest of the state and the rest of the country now we're finding are actually driving from Wyoming and getting in an accident right on Highway 10. So these are projects that are very important to the area, to our constituents, to other people as well. And certainly, I think it's just a wonderful request of the legislature to support these projects.
Thank you, Commissioner Look. And I would just add that, you know, of course, 109th is our county road and East River Road is our county road, but the intersecting roads are state highways. And we do have an interest in getting them safe and better for our constituents and others that move through the area. So this is really a resolution looking for some legislative support to get this stuff done. Further comments? Commissioner Meiser.
Just to thank you both, Commissioner Look and Schulte, for kind of explaining the county responsibility, the state and the city, because frankly, I'm still learning it and I know that most residents get confused about that as well. And at the end of the day, the residents don't really care if it's county or city or state road. They just want to get to work, they want to get to childcare, et cetera. So I just appreciate you guys giving it some context. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? We have a resolution before us. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? And that passes unanimous. Next, the committee recommends approval of a purchase of service contract with WSB Engineering for the design and permitting services for the reconstruction of Birch Street between Ware Road and Birch Court in the city of Lino Lakes in the amount of $286,526.55.
I'll move it.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
And that passes. And then lastly, on the action items, the committee recommends rejecting all bids, re-scoping the work, and schedule and re-advertising for new bids for the bituminous micro-surfacing of Main Street, Round Lake Boulevard, and Bunker Lake Boulevard in the cities of Coon Rapids and Andover. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Brassad.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Look. Just by way of explanation, this is a, micro-surfacing is a kind of a newer process for resurfacing roads. And apparently, the bids were not acceptable and we're looking for, we'll re-scope it and come back with a better price and better bids that we can accept in the future. Any further discussion? Commissioner Meiser.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I was not at the transportation meeting that this took place. So when this kind of thing happens, what, is there a huge concern about timing and, you know, that delay? Or how does, how does that work?
Doug.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Meiser, County Board members, my name is Doug Fisher. I'm Transportation Division Manager and County Engineer. I think in this particular case, when we only received one bid and it was substantially higher than our estimate, we're finding that if you did not get your bid lettings out early in the year, you're going to get high bids. And so, you know, if this would have been bid in February, March, or April, I think it would have came in, we would have had multiple bids and we would have had better bids. You know, this work, again, micro-surfacing is just a three-eighths of an inch surface treatment. And really, the pavement on these roads, in the most part, is adequate. So delaying this work to even next year is probably not that bad. Because the pavement itself, what's really bad on these pavement are the longitudinal paving seams. Those are where it's deteriorating. And that's why this method was chosen on these routes because it's really a two-pass system. The first pass essentially fills in those gouges in the road and they level off the road, fill in the ruts with kind of an initial course. And then they cover the whole top curb to curb with a, with a micro-surfacing, a three-eighths inch layer. So, so the fact that, you know, these, these roads aren't hugely potholed in the driving lanes, this was really a remedy to fix those longitudinal paving seams. And so it might mean that we have to do some additional patching with our crews this year because it is still very dangerous to motorcyclists changing lanes and that sort of thing. So we will address that. But, but really, we think if we repackage this and rebid it even this year so that the contractor has the option, if they have the availability to do it this year, great. But if they want to carry it over to next year and have a job kind of in the bag already for next year, we think we'll get a much better price for that and not force that. So, and there's a section north of Round Lake Boulevard that we might exclude north of Highway 10. That might be a little too far gone that we might really want to do a mill and overlay on that section of road. So we're going to look at this a little bit more, maybe resize it, rebid it with that flexibility and when they can do it, we think we'll get multiple bids and we'll do it. And again, not doing it until next year because, again, the majority of the pavement still is in decent shape, but this was just a remedy to extend the life of it.
Right.
Without doing extensive mill and overlay, which would be very expensive.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gamache.
Mr. Fisher answered my question on the timing. Thank you.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And no one's opposed. Thank you, Doug. We have just a couple of quick information items you can see there. One was the recognition of the annual MedLink Recognition Luncheon donors. That was an informational item under Transit. And then under Highway, just some CIP conversations about the Anoka Solution projects and how that affects the CIP. So you can peruse those at your leisure. And that does conclude the transportation portion of the committee reports. And we will move in now to Finance and Capital Improvements Committee Report. Commissioner Look.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Finance and Capital Improvements Committee met on June 18th. We did come away with three action items. The first of which is the committee recommends the County Board approve Contract C-007298 with RJ Marco Construction for the completion of the ACAP remodel at the Blaine Human Service Center for costs not to exceed $353,000, $353,226 to be exact. This is a, this is a lease addendum to the ACAP lease that we have over there. This is a five-year payback on this with a 3% interest. So it'd probably be a similar type of deal where we utilize our asset preservation funds and we pay for this in advance. We don't bond for this. And we actually end up making 3% on the deal. So they're interested in remodeling their space. There's some safety concerns over there. So it's a win-win situation for both of us.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Brassad, second by Commissioner West. Is there further discussion?
I'm sorry, is this just?
Commissioner Meiser.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Is this just Action Item 1 or are we doing all three?
Just Action Item 1.
Okay, thank you. No, no, no questions about Action Item Number 1.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
And that motion passes. Item 2.
Item 2, the committee recommends the County Board approve the following master contracts for periodic landscaping needs for a three-year term with the option to renew for additional one-year terms for a possible total of five years. And the contract is with Abramson Nurseries out of Scandia, Minnesota, and A+ Outdoor Services out of Ham Lake, Minnesota. And this is, again, we keep these master contracts on place for needs that we may have. You know, if there's projects we're not able to handle or projects that are better suited for professionals in the industry, then we'll, we'll be able to utilize these master contracts.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Brassad, second by Commissioner Gamache. Further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye. And that motion passes. Next, we'll move on to Item 3.
Mr. Chair, Item 3 is the committee recommends the County Board adopt Resolution 2019-F3 Performance Measure Program for the 2018 Performance Measures. Members will recall that we do this every single year. We are financially paid $25,000 to participate in this program through the state. It's information we already collect. And, and so by compiling it, we're able to send the state information they're looking for. And again, another win-win situation.
Thank you. Commissioner Look, is this the, is this what's referred to as the Results First movement? I, I'm sorry to ask. I wasn't at your meeting and I apologize for that. But I, I think this is what Minnesota's referring to as the Results First, if you go online and look it up. I think that's where all this information gets compiled, but I'm not positive.
Mr. Chair, I know we compile it, send it to them, and what they do with it, I'm not quite sure.
Okay. Well, thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, Action Item Number 3. You did answer some of the questions, Commissioner Look. I wasn't, I wasn't clear if it, if this happened every year. But now that you bring up, what, what did you call it?
Results First.
Results First. I've not heard of that. What is, what does that mean? Or?
From my understanding, the state of Minnesota has, through the legislature, they have put together a program where anybody that's willing to compile all of their information.
Yeah.
And submit it to the state of Minnesota. The state of Minnesota will put it all in a database and call it Results First.
Okay, I see.
To make sure that the work you're doing is producing results. This was put in place a number of sessions ago.
Okay.
And I'm pretty sure these two are linked together, this performance measurement along with Results First.
And then I do have one more question. So I'm just curious, when you're talking about, because we're already collecting the data, so it sounds like really all we do is organize it and then send it off to the state, is that something that we, we do on purpose because we know that we are doing this every year? Or is it just happens to be that we, it's just, or is it just a coincidence that we happen to be, you know, collecting all the data anyway?
Commissioner Look.
Mr. Chair, I think it's convenient because we are collecting the data, you know, already. I recall when this first went into effect, we, there was a financial incentive to provide this information, thinking that at some point, the state would say, every county needs to provide this. So far, it hasn't turned over to a mandated services, you know, requirement as of yet. But, but certainly, I think it's, you know, it's part of transparency. We already collect this data. If the state needs to use it for an effective purpose on their end, great, and we're happy to help.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? And that'll pass unanimous.
And, Mr. Chair, the rest is for informational purposes. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Look. Next, we'll turn to the Human Services Committee Report. Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We met on June 18th, and our first item is to recommend the County Board submit a written statement of support with rationale to the Minnesota Department of Human Services regarding a new application for a 245G licensure by Renewed Life Counseling Services. This is a provider in the area of substance use disorder treatment programs, and they're just asking the county to supply a written statement that we would support them.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner West.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meisner. Further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? And that will pass unanimous. Next item.
Consider recommending the County Board enter into Contract C-0006430 Amendment 1 with the Minnesota Department of Human Services Community Living Infrastructure Grant in the amount of $250,037 for the term of July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2021, with an estimated carryover of unspent funding from state fiscal year 2019, which is estimated to be $84,607 for a total grant funding of $334,644 for the remaining two years. The money from this grant will be used to provide two contingent positions. And I'll move that.
There's a motion on the floor? Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Meiser. Further discussion? Seeing none, it's a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
And that motion passes. Next item.
Consider recommending the County Board enter into Contract C-0007296, which is a renewal with the Salvation Army for Family Homeless Prevention Assistance Program Services from July 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2021, with a contract maximum of $428,38.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Look, second by Commissioner West. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
And that passes. Next, we'll move to Item 4.
Consider recommending the County Board enter into Contract C-0007297, which is a renewal with Emma B. Howe YMCA for Family Homeless Prevention and Assistance Program Services from July 1st, 2019 through September 30th, 2021. Contract maximum on this one is $207,914.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Gamache, second by Commissioner Brassad. Or is it West? Commissioner West was the second. Thank you. Is there further discussion?
Commissioner Meiser. Just commentary that I'm really pleased to see partnerships with both of these agencies for Number 3 and 4, which is Salvation Army and Emma B. Howe YMCA.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
And that passes. We'll move on to Item 5.
The committee recommends the County Board adopt Resolution 2019-HS-12, which is the Economic Assistance Bills. And I'll offer that resolution.
The resolution's been offered. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
And that passes.
And that concludes my report, but I do have a chair's report.
Let's move right into your chair's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Consider recommending the County Board enter into Contract C-0007309 with Anoka County Community Action Program to provide transportation coordinator services for a period of 18 months and in accordance with Anoka County Community Action Program accounting and contract procedures. This is just a continuation of a service that we've provided, that SEEP used to provide, and they are no longer able to do so. So ACAP has agreed to provide the services.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Gamache. Further discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
I abstain because I sit on the Board of ACAP.
One abstention, that passes. Thank you.
That concludes my reports.
Thank you, Commissioner Brassad. Next, we'll move on to the additional County Board item, which is from our Management Committee. Commissioner West.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Excuse me. We ask that the Board consider adopting Resolution 2019-M1. It's for the Deputy Register Reimbursement Grant Program for Anoka County. And as I think everyone in the state of Minnesota is pretty well aware of the MinLARS problem, it is very much deserved and long overdue, and Anoka County will be receiving $578,395.08.
Thank you. Commissioner West, is there an offer of the resolution?
I'd like to offer the resolution.
The resolution has been offered. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Meiser.
Yeah, just commentary because we just got out of that meeting and I found it fascinating. So just the way the breakdown was of the $13 million in total for the state of Minnesota. And John did say that he was actually actively part of trying to develop what that formula breakdown was to all the counties, and he was really pleased with that. And I did ask too, like, how does this work when we've lost money and now we're recouping some money? And he does plan on putting any money, typically he does, in the reserves, which I thought was also a really good plan. So kudos to John and that whole department during this entire challenging time with MinLARS.
And I would comment that for, for most people, they really kind of understand the way this is all set up, but it's not just counties that run these. In fact, some counties have nothing to do with registrars and they're private deputy registrars. So a number of them were on the losing end of all this because of the government and their system. So this 13 million does go a long ways towards helping out those private deputy registrars and, of course, our county and other counties that have put forth. One of our greatest expenses is, of course, manpower. And with the failure of MinLARS, we had to hire more people. So this goes a long ways towards recouping some of those costs. I, I don't think we'll be even. I don't think we'll get even. But we certainly want to thank the state of Minnesota and the legislature for implementing this, and we'll look forward to this resolution passing. Further discussion? With that, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
And that passes. Next, we'll move to item nine on our agenda, to consider approving Contract C-007323, renewal of commercial automobile insurance from Euclid Public Sector Hudson Insurance Company through the Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Services for a policy term of July 1st, 19 through July 1st, 2020, for a premium of $213,733. Is there a motion to approve?